Welcome to our April 6, 2021 Board of Supervisors meeting. At this time, I will go ahead and call our meeting to order. And Sheriff, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Sheriff. It's good to see the public. We usually look at all our staff members, and not that there's anything wrong with that, but we're glad that slowly but surely things are starting to open up, but we can't let our guard down. So with that, Item B, adoption of the agenda. Madam Manager.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We need to remove Action Item G-12, please.
Okay.
And there are no other changes.
Okay. Chair, entertain a motion.
Sir, Chair, move to adopt the agenda and remove Item G-12. Allow Chair to deviate as needed.
Now, second that. There's a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, and our agenda is adopted. We'll go to Item C, call to the public. If you're on the phone, is it star nine? And or star six?
Star nine.
Star nine? And I don't see that there's anybody on the phone. Or maybe we just see the great seal. There we go. Star nine. Going once. Going twice. That's three times, and that's from our people participating online. Anyone? Jesus, good morning. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I just want to take this opportunity to let you know about a grant that we're successful at. Before I start, I want to pass these out.
This is a real one, not an April 1st one?
All right. So Marisa Cervantes from WIIOA made us aware there was a grant. And with her efforts and Tracy Hofstadter, we were able to get, and working with the contractor for the equipment, we were able to come up with something that fits within the grant. I think it was approved last week. So they're going to buy the playground equipment, and we're going to install it. I think I talked to a few of them. Right now, what we're looking at is right sizing some of the playground equipment in some of the parks, adding swings and where they fit. And then the addition to that is adding some seating so that parents could sit there and watch your kids and have to stand. But I just want to let you guys know that, you know, it was a, they did a great job, and I wanted to recognize them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jesus. It's outstanding. I'm glad, you know, try to fix up our parks.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Anyone else under call to the public? Sheriff?
Can I give you guys a little handout on this subject?
Thank you, sir.
It's something that's, it's a federal issue, but unfortunately, we continue to be bombarded by this. And it's, I do media write-alongs about every day. There's just so much interest on this topic, and it's the supposed migrant surge at the border. People try to put words in my mouth all the time. So I thought, you know, we don't have a political agenda here. We just want to tell the truth. We want to say the way it is. And what I've put in front of you is border apprehension statistics for the last 41 years. It behooves all of us to know this topic because this is, this is something that's been the flavor of the day. Let me catch you up to speed a little bit. The governor hasn't come yet down to our community, but he has come down to Cochise County. We have certain very vocal sheriffs in this state who are trying to fan the flames on a supposed crisis. The governor went to Cochise County border and met with Sheriff Daniels of Cochise County and Sheriff Lamb of Pinal County, who he does not have a piece of the border. And they made the determination through a lot of rhetoric that we need heightened action on the border. I got worried three weeks ago. The governor was saying in Phoenix, he's going to send the military to the border. He's going to send the National Guard to the border. I tried to meet with him last week through his protocol officer, tried to schedule a meeting to tell him the reality of what's going on the border versus the hype of what's going on the border. My meeting was declined. And then late on Friday, I received an email from a Major General McGuire, who's the commander of all the National Guard forces in Arizona, the Air National Guard and the Army National Guard, saying, under orders of the governor, he is going to send troops to the border if requested by the sheriffs. And this message went to five sheriffs, me, Sheriff Daniels, Cochise County, Sheriff Wilmont, Pima County, and Chris Nanos of Pima County, who all have a piece of the border, Yuma County, Pima, Cochise, and Santa Cruz. And it also went to two other counties, Maricopa and Pinal, who do not have a piece of the border. And so far, every one of them has requested troops to be sent to their county except for myself and Chris Nanos of Pima County. We both responded saying, we don't have a migrant crisis on the border. We do not need to militarize our counties and have troops come to the border. Now, in order to back that up, that this is not just rhetoric, what you have in front of you is Southwest border apprehension statistics for the past 41 years. This is under both Republican and Democrat administrations. For a period in the 1980s, 1990s, and 2000s, practically every year was over a million apprehensions on the Southwest border. So that was from 1983 to 2006, a 24-year period under both Democrat and Republican presidents. In the last 14 years, we haven't had one year that has approached a million. As a matter of fact, most years in the last 14 years have been less than half a million. Also bear in mind, during the same period, Border Patrol has quadrupled in size. At the bottom of this page, 1990, Border Patrol had 4,000 agents. Now they have 20,000 agents. So Border Patrol has increased five times, and the statistics have not approached a million in any year in the past 14 years, although it was a regular occurrence almost every year in the 80s, in the 90s, and in the 2000s, with much smaller Border Patrol. Now, I have on the upper part there the fiscal year statistics for this year so far because that's the way Border Patrol does it. That's the way CBB does it, is by fiscal year. So there's a lot of hype of projecting, oh, this is going to be a record-setting year. It's going to match or exceed fiscal year '20 and fiscal year 2019. But if you look at it, if you project the average of the month so far, the average is 76,000 per month. You project that, if that stays at that same rate till the end of the year, you're still under a million. You're at 915,000. So like I said, this shouldn't be a topic that we talk about as county officials, but we want to tell the truth. We don't have a political agenda. We want to just articulate the reality of what we really have going on in our county. And I want you to know why I turned down the National Guard troops to come to our border county, and it's based on this data. This isn't any kind of a political agenda or social agenda or anything like that. The crisis we do have is an economic crisis because the B-1 and the B-2 visa holders, the tourist visa holders, are not being allowed to cross into the U.S., so we're not capturing those dollars into our local economy. And typically, on the Southwest border, Mexican visa holders spend $55 million a year into the U.S. economy every day. No, not a year, every day on all the Southwest border states. $55 million a day comes into our economy. We're not capturing those dollars because of the ports of entry being close to Mexican tourist shopper. I was a little bit long-winded there. I know this is not a discussion session, so probably not really appropriate for Q&amp;A, although I would stand up here a bit longer if anyone wants me to address anything else. That's basically it. I have some more copies of this if there's any media in the room or anybody wants a copy of the actual numbers, not the hype that you maybe were hearing.
Yeah. Sheriff.
Thank you very much, Sheriff.
Thank you, Sheriff. It's always important to get the statistics out, and I think this will help us a lot when we get calls too, so. Anyone else under call to the public? Seeing no one rush up to the podium, we'll go on to Item D, current events. Vice Chairman Brecker.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Chairman Reese. The last two weeks have been really spent meeting with constituents, placing phone calls to, placing phone calls to and emails with DHS regarding reconfiguration of the deconceding port of entry. And that's what I've been working on. Thank you very much.
Supervisor Miletta.
Mr. Chairman, good morning. I have a few things to touch on. One, and most importantly, I want to make a public announcement that we have plenty of vaccines this week for the general public. We need to get the word out to get people vaccinated. It's really critical, and we can't let our guard down. You know, I know it was Easter and all that, and it's starting to normalize a little bit, but we need to do it in a slow process. And again, thanks to Mariposa, all our partners, Jeff, Jennifer, all involved with our COVID vaccinations. I also had an issue, I have an issue going on in my district with an ADOT project. Fisher Construction is doing an asphalt project out of Ramonote, and it's created some havoc with the neighbors there. And we've worked diligently with the contractor, with ADOT, with ADQ, to make sure things are working properly. And I asked that our neighbors be patient. We're working to try and make things better. And I want to thank Jesus, his staff, Kim as well getting involved, Jennifer, and Frank. Thank you. I really appreciate you guys doing your due diligence with this issue. And then we're working hard at it. We've got another meeting set up with ADQ at the end of the week via conference call and continue to try and make things better for our neighbors and our community. And that's all I have. Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Supervisor Miletta. Just quickly, did participate in the NACO Legislative Conference virtually. It was very interesting. We did have some very special guests that spoke at our conference from President Biden, House Speaker Pelosi, Transportation Secretary Pete Buttigieg, or the mayor, and a couple of the high-ranking Republican officials. And I jotted their name down, but I didn't bring them out here, and it wasn't, I didn't do it on purpose, but it was a, it was great to see what, you know, they're trying to do. And I know right now, there's a huge infrastructure project. There's going to be a meeting, a call-in meeting today to listen in on the White House from infrastructure to COVID-19. I will be participating in a listen-only meeting on Friday with DHS and ICE on what the plans are along the border. Unfortunately, it's not an interactive one where you can ask questions, but until I hear what it is they proposing, I guess you can't really ask a question not knowing what the policies are going to be Department of Homeland Security. So that starts at 1:00 Eastern today, I think, which is 11:00 our time? Or 10:00?
10:00.
10:00. So I'll make sure that if we're still here, I'll forward it to our Public Works Director so he can sign in and listen to that. With that, I trust everybody had a happy Easter and a Passover. I know for our Muslim friends, Ramadan is coming up, I think on Wednesday. So however you choose to participate with your culture, please do so safely. Thank you Supervisor Miletta for mentioning that there are appointments available, that there are a lot of appointments available for people to get vaccinated. We opened it up to 18 and older because it is the Moderna vaccine. If it was Pfizer, then 16 and older could participate, but I would encourage everyone, if you know any family members that have been kind of putting it off, please tell them to go to our website and register. The sooner that we can get a vast majority of our residents and people in the state of Arizona vaccinated, the better off we're going to be. And even though the governor has said that, you know, business as usual, we still encourage people to wear their mask, to wash their hands, and to social distance. We don't want to have another wave come and then have to go back to square one. You know, we want to be as responsible as we can so that we can move forward and open up our economy so that we can get the workforce working, we can get businesses once again, you know, doing their services to our, or delivering their services to our constituents. So with that, Madam Manager.
Good morning again. Over the past few weeks, I've attended the CSA Small County Caucus and Board of Directors meeting. We continue to meet every two weeks with the Governor's Office regarding vaccine distributions. I've met with Cochise County a couple of times to discuss our joint issues that we're both facing right now and to talk about additional partnerships that we may enter into. As Supervisor Malera mentioned, we've been meeting with ADQ and ADOT to try to solve that issue. We've also attended presentations on PSPRS and the unfunded liability. You all know that's a big issue, so the county's looking into that and what's the best direction for our county to take. Jeff and I continue to meet with the school superintendents throughout the county on a regular basis. Sonia and I had an opportunity to review the personnel policy. As you all remember, we're in the process of rewriting that, so we're in the final stages of that so that we can get that out to the elected officials and department heads. And I think you've talked a lot about the vaccine. I appreciate you letting the public know. We do have the online registration on the Santa Cruz County website. In addition, if you don't have access to a computer, you can call our hotline Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00 at (520) 375-7626. I want to thank Genesis, I think she's on the phone, for the article she did yesterday. We do want to get the word out there that there are appointments available. You can even go on our website or call our hotline right now and make appointments for this afternoon. So it is important that we get those out. We are working on Saturday at the Rec Center for Johnson &amp; Johnson. So if there's any individual that wants Johnson &amp; Johnson, they do need to call our hotline. Those templates aren't up online, but if they can call our hotline, we can get them in on Saturday. And just a little overview on the vaccine. Currently, per the state's website, we have 29,480 shots in arms now. 19,131 of our residents have at least one dose, and 11,034 individuals are fully vaccinated. Per the state, that's a total of 36% vaccinated in our community, which is fourth in the state of Arizona. So we're very proud of that percentage. And if we can get these appointments filled, I have no doubt that we could go into first or second place by the end of the week. So that's our goal, to get everyone vaccinated. So that's all I have to report this morning.
Great. Thank you, Jennifer. And as always, you and our partners, Mariposa, the city, have done a great job with this, and we will continue to encourage people to get vaccinated, so. And for those people that don't want two shots, Johnson &amp; Johnson on Saturdays, it's a one-shot, and it'll give you the same protection. Mr. Brecker, or Vice Chairman Brecker's phone went off, so he's buying lunch for everyone today, and not at Zulus. Okay. We'll move on to Item E, Department Reports and Activities, Finance, Cash, Investment. Expenditure. Mauricio, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. The cash and investment report, the general fund has an overall balance of $12,277,819 with an investment amount of $6,783,000. The road fund has an overall balance of $2,341,176 with an investment amount of $814,000. The flood control district has an overall balance of $2,785,689 with an investment amount of $1.8 million. The jail district has an overall balance of $2,804,663 with an investment amount just a little bit over $1 million. Total for all funds, overall balance $33,149,785 with an investment amount of $12,273,000 for an estimated end-of-the-month balance of $9,543,221.
Gentlemen, any questions of Mr. Chavez?
No, sir.
Okay, great. At this time, the chair will entertain a motion to recess and convene into the Flood Control District. That's two. So move. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, sir. We are now convening to the Flood Control District. John, good morning. How are you doing, Mr. Hayes?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I'm doing well. Hopefully you are too. You should have a copy of the report there in front of you. I just have one addendum to it, which would be on item number eight. We ended the month with direct requests. These would be requests that are sent in by email, telephone, or fax or in person of 317 requests for the month. Through the online system that's been developed, we have, when we add that in, about 340 for the month. We haven't seen numbers this high for requests for information since round about 2006, 2007.
Good.
Good news.
Okay. Monthly report from the city?
Did not receive a report from the city.
Monthly report from the town of Patagonia?
Did not receive one from the town of Patagonia.
Yeah, well, I'm glad since we haven't seen any rain, which we really need, so there hasn't been a lot of requests for service. Public comment, and just a, have we heard back on our submission for that Ephraim Canyon project?
Yes, sir. Included in the packet is the public notice that was requested to be posted, both at our posting site here within the county building and on-site or as close to as possible. And so I did post those effective on the 1st of April at the billboard here in the building and on the, at the driveway entrance to the area for the Ephraim Canyon project.
Good.
On Western Avenue. Or Target Ranger Road, I should say.
And then the second one, how are we doing with the map provisions for downtown Nogales, Marley?
I would have to defer to Mr. Valdez on that.
I'm sorry to put you guys on the line. I know we have it in the report, but I want to make sure that the public is aware of what it is that we're doing within the flood control district. Jesus, good morning again.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. We submitted our second, so we got our first comments. We addressed those comments, and then we submitted. It looks like they're taking 90 days to respond for, that's what they're doing right now, but we're on track. We believe, you know, what we submit is pretty solid, so I'll keep you guys updated as more information comes along.
Great. Thank you, Jesus. I think it's important that people realize that we're trying to remove the downtown area from the floodway or flood plain, and that would really help with people investing downtown, so.
Yes, sir. And just a point on the process. Generally speaking, FEMA's response period is a 90-day response period for whenever we submit to them. So, and they usually take all of that 90 days.
Well, that's our government for you, but because they're the ones that control that thing, we have to work and abide by the rules, so hopefully it'll be favorable for our community so that we can get some investment downtown, Nogales, for the people especially that own those buildings. So we'll see how that goes. Any comments from my colleagues?
No, sir.
Public comment. At this time, the board will take public comment on any issue. Seeing no one rushing up to the podium, Mr. Hayes, thank you very much. Jesus, thank you. And at this time, chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our Flood Control District and reconvene to regular session. So moved to hear a second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we are now reconvened in our regular section. G, Action Items. One, discussion, possible action for authorization to fill vacant court technology and database administrator position. Is this budgeted for? Are you sure you want to make Juan Pablo come and talk? He'll probably stay all day there.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah, we need a motion.
So all move that we authorize to. Fill the vacant court technology and database administrator's position.
Do you hear a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Juan Pablo.
No, it's okay, Juan Pablo. I already know when Juan Pablo comes, he's always asking for us to spend money.
Well, well, well spent money. Money well spent.
Thank you, Juan Pablo.
Good to see you.
Thank you for coming, Juan Pablo.
Yeah. Okay. Item two, discussion, possible action to approve agreement with ADT Commercial to supply and install additional cameras to the video surveillance systems in the court building. So moved to hear a second. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item three, discussion, possible action to approve grant renewals with First Things First from July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022. Chair will entertain a motion.
To approve.
Do you hear a second? Second discussion. And that's two items. It's Item A, Grant Number GRARC 020211080-01 for the Arizona Early Childhood Development Program in the amount of $10,000. And B is Grant Number FTFRC, so that would be 020190640-02-Y3 for Los Padres Home Visitation Programs in the amount of $186,000. And that's just for the record on the motion that was made. There is a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item four, discussion, possible action to approve work proposal for Southwest Educational Consulting Associates for the Department of Justice Stop Violence Award Number 2020YSBX0022 Grant from October 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021 in the amount of $17,300. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Do you hear a second? Discussion.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank the county school superintendent and his staff. We've just approved today over $200,000 in grants that he's brought to our community, so I think you should acknowledge that.
Yep, they do a good job. Chris, please let Alfredo know. Any other discussion or comments? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item five, discussion, possible action to approve the service-client agreement with Target Solutions and American Consulting and the Safety Services for Virtual Hazardous Material Training in the amount of $6,000 and reimbursed through the existing Hazardous Materials Emergency Preparedness Training Award. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do you hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item six, discussion, possible action to approve agreements with the State of Arizona Department of Emergency and Military Affairs and ratify the county manager's signature A Disaster Assistance Agreement, DR4524, and that applies to all assistance funds provided by or through DEMA Emergency Services, right? Item B, Award Package Number One, CV497, for expenses incurred for the vaccination pod from January 13, 2021 through February 12, 2021 in the amount of $266,192.60. And C, Award Package Number Two, CV501, for expenses incurred for the vaccination. for expenses incurred for the vaccination pods from February thirteenth, twenty twenty-one through April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one in the amount of five hundred and eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-six dollars and twenty-two cents. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve as presented by the chair.
Do you hear a second?
And I will second.
Any discussion or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is a great example of, you know, the vaccination program that we've done here, but also the work of the Emergency Services Department, which is something that a lot of people don't know about in our county. But it is part of the services that we pay for out of your property tax, and so.
Yeah, and Ryan and his staff does a great job working along with the Health Department and Jennifer. And so, you know, that's, that's money that comes in to pay for some of these things. It doesn't come out of our general fund, so.
Right.
Kudos to them. There is a motion and a second. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item seven, discussion, possible action to authorize the clerk of the Superior Court and justice of the Peace Court to enter into an agreement with Rapid Financial Solutions for payments of jury services. Chair will entertain a motion. So moved. Do you hear a second? Discussion. Juan Pablo, since you're coming up, I'm gonna let you keep a chart, please. I know. Good to see you, my friend.
Good to see, well, good to hear all of you in person. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, the clerk of the court and the justice of the Peace Court respectfully request the approval of us entering into an agreement with Rapid Financial Solutions. This will enhance the way we pay people who come, citizens who come to serve as jurors to both courts. We will be able to pay them via a credit card, deposit the money immediately upon, upon completion of the service and of the payroll. And will make things much easier and faster. We currently are printing and issuing individual, individual checks to every juror that comes to court. This will assist us in making the process faster and in a much modern way to do a transaction. So again, I respectfully request that this is approved.
Great. So there's a motion and a second. Discussion, comments? I, I think it's important, too, when people receive that letter from your office requesting that they sign up for jury duty, that they do, and members that gets selected, depends on what the trial is, will get reimbursed for their time and mileage if applicable, right, Juan Pablo?
That is correct, Mr. Chairman. And also, if the trial is more than, takes, lasts more than six days, then the lengthy jury trial fund goes into effect for every trial that is more than six days in length. So that's, that's another thing that we have in the, in the statutes that allows us to reimburse even further those jurors that come and serve.
Great. Okay. Any other comments or questions? If not, there is a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much.
You got it, Juan Pablo. Item eight, discussion, possible action to approve proclamations declaring A, April of twenty twenty-one is National County Government Month?
Aye.
B, April eleventh, twenty twenty-one through April seventeenth, twenty twenty-one is National Public Safety Telecommunications Week? C, April eighteenth through April twenty-fourth, National Volunteer Week? That was requested by the sheriff, as was the previous one. The other one was our county manager. And item D, April eighteenth through April twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one is Administrative Professional Weeks also from the sheriff. Miss St. John?
Mr. Chairman, the sheriff's office has requested that we read items B through D.
B through D, okay.
My apologies for the late notice.
Well, that's okay. We can, we can go ahead and take a motion and then read them after. So there, do, I hear a motion to approve. So moved. Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, so since there's three of them, I'll, I'll just go ahead and issue one each to one of my colleagues and so the first one is the telecommunications. I think you have that one, Mr. Malera.
I'd be honored to read this proclamation. National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, April eleventh through seventeenth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas thousands of dedicated public safety dispatchers, call-takers, telecommunicators, and telecommunications support personnel throughout the state of Arizona provide dramatic life-saving services by taking distressed callers through CPR and calming hysterical crime victims, and they make difficult decisions using limited information to save lives or reduce property damage on a daily basis. And whereas the critical functions performed by these public safety dispatchers, call-takers, telecommunicators, and telecommunications support personnel, both sworn and civilian, play a significant role in the daily lives of approximately seven million Arizonans. And whereas the Arizona Department of Administration in cooperation with the Arizona Chapter of National Emergency Number Association has set aside the week of April eleventh through seventeenth, twenty twenty-one to recognize the efforts of these dedicated people. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County call upon all citizens of Santa Cruz County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of April eleventh through seventeenth, twenty twenty-one as National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week, commemorating public safety telecommunicators who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their community. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set your hand and cause the seal of Santa Cruz County to be affixed this April sixth, twenty twenty-one. Chairman Manuel Ries, Vice Chairman Bruce Bracker, and yours truly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Vice Chairman Bracker.
Okay, proclamation, National Volunteers Week, April eighteenth through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas the entire community can affect a positive change with any volunteer action, no matter how big or small. And whereas millions of volunteers working in their communities utilize their time and talent daily to make a difference in the lives of children, adults, and the elderly. And whereas during the week, all over the nation, service projects will be performed and volunteers will be recognized for their commitment and service, commitment to service. And whereas giving of oneself in service to another empowers the giver and the recipient. And whereas our county's volunteer force is a great treasure. And whereas volunteers are vital to our future as a caring and positive nation. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County call upon all citizens of Santa Cruz County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of April eighteenth through twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one as National Volunteer Week, commemorating volunteers who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their community. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the seal of the Santa Cruz County to be fixed on this sixth day of April, twenty twenty-one. Chairman Manuel Ries, Vice Chairman Bruce Bracker, Supervisor Rudy Malera.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. And proclamation, Administrative Professional Week, April eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one. Whereas administrative professionals play an essential role in coordinating office operations for businesses, government, educational institutions, and other organizations. And whereas a well-trained workforce is essential for success in today's economy. And whereas the work of administrative professionals requires advanced knowledge and expertise in communication, computer software, office technology, project management, organization, customer service, and other vital office management responsibilities. And whereas Administrative Professionals Week is observed annual, annually, excuse me, in workplaces around the world to recognize the important contributions of administrative staff. And whereas the county of Santa Cruz, in conjunction with the International Association of Administrative Professionals, in honoring the office professionals who lead administrative professionals, their efforts reflect the integral and central role that office professionals play in modern business. Now, therefore, the Board of Supervisors of Santa Cruz County call upon all citizens of Santa Cruz County and upon all patriotic civic and educational organizations to observe the week of April eighteenth through the twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-one as Administrative Professionals Week, commemorating administrative professionals who, by their faithful and loyal devotion to their responsibilities, have rendered a dedicated service to their computer, to their communities. In witness thereof, we have hereunto set our hand and cause the seal of Santa Cruz County to be affixed this sixth day of April, twenty twenty-one. Rudy Malletta, member, Bruce Bracker, Vice Chairman, Manuel Ries, Chairman. A quick comment. I think these three proclamations are in order because of the work that is done, not just by the telecommunicators, when they're dispatching people out when there are emergencies, whether it's the law enforcement, whether it's medical assistance. I think it's important we recognize the important role that they play in our community. Our volunteers are especially very helpful. We've, we've seen this throughout the pandemic and the number of people that have, that have come up and really come to assist their community in this time of need. And our administrative professionals. I know Liz, this morning I was having a hard time trying to fill something out, and she looked and she says, well, you got your numbers tab locked, so just remove it and you can put your phone numbers. So it, it just shows that they make us look good. And sometimes they have to deal with an angry public. And I've seen them, that they're very calm. They take messages and they make sure then that we return our calls. So I think it's very appropriate that these proclamations are going to be adopted here today. And so with that, if there are no other comments or questions?
Comment. I know that we have had a lot of volunteers step up for the COVID crisis and vaccinations and testing and all these things. But there's also, you know, I know that there are volunteers in our community that clean roads and, you know, I have constituents that call me and they report that the sign is out, and they know the sign is out because they're out there cleaning the road and they picked up the sign that's fallen or something. So it's, it's, it's the big things, it's the small things. There's service clubs in this community that you can join. And it's just, it makes a big difference in our community. So if you haven't tried volunteering, it's very rewarding. I would highly recommend it.
Supervisor Malletta, anything to add?
No, we're just blessed to be surrounded by great people here at Santa Cruz County, and we appreciate all their hard work. I had a, a small case with my computer this morning, and Juanita took care of it right away. As a matter of fact, and it was just simple stuff, you know. And, and, and again, thank you.
Yeah, I always go and bug him. I said, this is the guy that's keeping you hired here because I need you to help me with something, so. It is. So there is a motion and a second to approve all three proclamations. If there is no further discussion or comments, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, and we can go ahead and, and get those out to the newspaper. Item nine, discussion, possible action to approve the appointment of precinct committee persons for the Republican Party requested by Steve McHewa, chairman of the Santa Cruz County Republican Party, A, Richard M. Bauerbach, Patagonia fourteen, and B, Terry H., is it Williams, Sonoyta fifteen. Chair will entertain a motion. So moved. Do you hear a second? Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item ten, discussion, possible action to amend the final plot of the Tubac Golf Resort Development Unit One, lots nineteen through twenty-one, thirty-nine, forty-three through forty-five, fifty-seven and fifty-eight, and that was case number PZ twenty-one oh-two. Everything in order on that one, Frank? Good. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Discussion.
Under discussion, I just want to say that over the years I've seen how that community has developed, the golf course and the homes. It's just beautiful. And commend you on, on those, on, on that community. Nice resort. And those are my comments, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair, anything to add?
I think, well, this is relating to, and I think Frank could probably address that a little bit better. This is some work that the golf resort had to do to get some plots out of floodplain. And it was, Frank, can you address that?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, that's correct, Supervisor Bracker. Essentially what happened was, was some of these lots, when, when it was originally plotted and approved by this board, were in the floodplain. And since the owners have been working with the county, Jesus, to do a study and get certain lots pulled out of the floodplain so that they could be developable again, there won't be any adverse impacts on any neighboring lots. They're just essentially trying to move forward and develop those nine additional lots, so. That's about it.
Thank you very much.
Right.
Any other comments, discussion? If not, there is a motion and a second.
One more call. They were in the local regulatory.
Okay. Okay, good. So it was in, in our backyard, not the federal government backyard. Okay. Makes sense. Okay. Okay, so there's a motion and a second. No further comments or discussion? If not, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item eleven, discussion, possible action to approve a provider contract with Sonoran Behavioral Health Hospital LLC for inpatient mental health services to meet our statutory requirements for Title Thirty-six, mental health services to commence on March first, twenty twenty-one and terminate on March thirty-first of twenty twenty-two. Everything in order, Kim? Great. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion, comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item thirteen, discussion, possible action to approve an intergovernmental agreement number twenty dash zero-zero-zero-eight-zero-four-seven dash, it looks like an I, not a one, right? With the state of Arizona acting by and through its Department of Transportation for design services on the Pendleton Drive dip at Sonoyta Creek Wash. Jesus, good morning.
Mr. Chair, the Segal region went through a safety study where they identified deficiencies. Some of the roads that were, in the past, there was more, somebody had died. And one of them that, in our county, is that dip section that you see on Pendleton by the, the old golf course. So with, with that, with that study that was done, we, the Segal region submitted that, and it was successful, so we got funded. This IGA is to, is to fund the, well, the scoping letter and the design. What would be coming out of our pockets at this time is roughly twelve thousand dollars, thirteen thousand dollars.
Great.
Is that going to be a similar project like the Keno Springs?
I, you know, we're, we were successful at that one, and we're, we're going to try to push them in that direction since we have no control per se of who they select as an engineer because it's a federal project. It's administered by EDA. We don't know what we're going to get, but I suspect just given the, you know, the profile of the road, I don't think it, it asks for a bridge, so it's going to be most likely a box culver. So we're going to go through that exercise and see.
Well, we can always give them a tour of what we did out there, and that thing really worked well because we were out there when that rain was coming, and man, that water was. was flowing like crazy. So good. Thank you, Jesus. Any comments, questions for Mr. Valdez? If not, there's a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Well, we haven't done this in a long time. Discussion, possible action to approve application for fireworks display Rio Rico High School graduation, May 12th, 2021. Everything in order? Good. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. And of course, the Rio Rico Fire Department will sign off on it as well, right? Great. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 15, discussion, possible action to approve bond for duplicate warrant number 4-665462 in the amount of $10,056 dated 9/4/2021 payable to Amplified IT LLC. Everything in order? Jennifer. Chair will entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Dare a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Tech valuations A through J.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Approval of minutes of 316/2021. Move to approve. Dare a second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Demands, Supervisor Moletta.
Mr. Chair, move to approve demands totaling $758,703.21, of which $246,025.83 are from the general fund.
Dare a second.
Second.
Discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. At this time, I will entertain a motion to recess our regular session and convene into the public hearing.
So moved.
Second, discussion. Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, item H, public hearing, one, adoption of ordinance number 2021-5, amending Article 30, medical marijuana dispensary, marijuana establishments, dual licensee establishments and off-site cultivation and manufacturing facilities, Section 3004, performance standards to modify the distance standards for adult use recreational marijuana establishment and nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries from similar, from similar use, public, private schools, places of worship and public parks. Frank, this is the one that we sent back to, or this is the one that we kind of, because the Planning and Zoning Commission had set different, different boundaries when you first presented it and since had been published with the old, then the board made a motion and sent back for you to correct the distances. Is that correct?
That's correct, Supervisor Ruiz. Essentially, the original draft that we had brought to you previously had recommendations from the planning commission that the schools, places of worship and the like be cut in half as well as the distances from, for example, similar uses be cut in half as well. So that's where we are.
And you posted it in the newspaper and everything?
It's been correctly noticed.
No comments?
No comments.
Anyone from the public have any comments? Anyone on the phone, star nine? Or if you're on the phone, star six? Or if you're on Zoom, raise your hand? Okay, going once. Going twice. Okay, thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
I don't see anyone from the public, so this time Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn our public hearing and reconvene regular session.
Moved.
Second, discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And we are back to our regular agenda. Item 19, discussion, possible action to adopt ordinance number 2021-5, amending Article 30, miracle marijuana dispensaries, marijuana establishments, dual licensee establishments and off-site cultivation and marijuana and manufacturing facilities, Section 3004, performance standards to modify distance standards for adult use recreational marijuana establishment and nonprofit medical marijuana dispensaries and other similar uses, public, private schools, places of worship and public parks. Chair will entertain a motion to approve or moved.
Second.
Discussion, hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we will go ahead and recess our meeting to 11:00 AM where we will have a study session. So, folks, we're coming up on 11:00 AM and I will go ahead and reconvene our meeting, study session, one, American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 Administrative Services. Mauricio, good morning again.
Good morning again, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to present the study session for the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021. The American Rescue Plan of 2021 was signed into law on March 11th of 2021. It's a $1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act with $362 billion for state and local governments. $9,018,001 is the estimated allocation for Santa Cruz County. We haven't received the actual amount, but that's the estimation from various sources for our county. The funding timeline is a two-part that we're expected to receive 50% of the estimated allocation, which would be $4,509,001 within 60 days of enactment. For our purposes, that would fall probably by May 10th of this year. And then the second part, which is the 50% of the, of the allocation, the second part, would be no earlier than one year after that. And that's approximately, probably we're looking at May 10th of 2022. From the guidance that we've received from the Treasury, the allowable usable use of the funds is to respond to COVID-19 emergency and address its economic effects, provide government services affected by revenue reduction, assistance to households, small businesses and nonprofits, and investments in water, sewer or broadband infrastructure. Again, the final guidelines haven't been given to us by the Treasury and we're, that's just the basic guidelines from the Treasury. Our plan for the rescue plan funding is to stabilize, and that's to, the resources to stabilize our operating budget, what we suffered from the economic impact from COVID, to strategize, to invest in small business, nonprofits and infrastructure, and finally to organize to enable inclusive recovery from future COVID-19 impacts. Stabilize, so the county incurred large deficits in 2020 due to economic slowdown in COVID-19 pandemic-related costs. Our recommendation is to allocate funds to replenish the shortfall in general fund, in the general fund and in the road fund. The economic impact that we had, it's a, it's a four-parter of the study that I conducted and the assessment that I did. The general fund compared to last year, from FY20 to FY21, we've suffered an 11% drop in retail sales tax, in restaurants and bars in that category from the same period of year, we've dropped in 21% as well. The road fund has incurred a similar drop in revenue. The highway user revenue fees from one year to the next is a 4% drop. And then the overweight permit fees, it's a 37% drop. If you need to ask questions, please let me know, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead. Any questions, gentlemen, so far?
No, sir.
Okay, go ahead.
So stabilize, the projected lost revenues that we've incurred in both in the general fund and the road fund, those numbers were done under a really large assessment that I conducted based on the previous year, which that's what the law indicated that we could use the previous year of an assessment. So based on the numbers that we have, we project that we're going to be losing revenue of about $379,000 in FY21 for the general fund and almost $600,000 for the road fund. Now, projection for lost revenues has been challenging due to the lack of useful precedence to model the economic impact of a once-in-a-lifetime pandemic. There was a survey conducted by the National Association of Business Economics. At that national level, economists do not envision a quick turnaround in the economy as well as a second wave of COVID-19 infections could prevent many consumers from resuming previous spending habits. So with that, there's, there's an industry standard of between anywhere from 4% to 6% of increase per year for the life of this, of this grant or the, or the funding. So that's the projection that I have. Based on the general fund and the road fund of having the lost revenues, I project that we're going to be having a 5% increase in lost revenues for the next three consecutive years after that. So it brings the total for the general fund of $1,634,000 and then the total for the road fund of $2,565,000.
So that's the next three and a half fiscal years, then?
Correct. The next phase that I, that I develop is to strategize. So provide or make a recommendation to provide small business relief program, which provides grants to qualifying businesses that have been hurt also by the COVID-19 pandemic. And then I'll provide the nonprofit organization assistance program, provide grants to qualifying 501(c) nonprofit organizations.
Mauricio? When you're talking about 501s, you're talking about C3s, C6s, you're talking about any nonprofit, right?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, that is correct. The 501(c), that's basically the, the basic term, but it does qualify everyone underneath that as well.
Because we have several C6s in our community.
Correct, yes. So also another element that we can use the funding for is to strategize, is to provide a broadband infrastructure program. I met with the IT director and there's, there's an estimation of, of initial assessment of about $120,000 that it would take for an organization or a, or a professional services to come in and provide the needs that we have as a county. We can conduct that assessment to analyze, to analyze the need, involve the stakeholders, you know, employ small projects. We also have to worry about the grant matching and then we can implement the plan. I know that, I know very basic stuff about the IT project itself, but you know, IT would be able to provide a better, better response to that.
Yeah, and Juan and I had the opportunity to listen into that broadband ad hoc committee that, at NACO, and they had some pretty good ideas on there, so. But, so I want to thank Juan for sitting down there for about an hour with me.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I think Mauricio covered the high overview of this plan. To get the, our initial assessment done, so we kind of understand where, A, the highest needs are and what our approach is going to be. Although we would love to have fiber to each home, I also recognize that that might not be possible, right? So we have to think about other technologies, wireless or 5G, something like that. So that's what a firm would help us assess. And then, you know, we're also, I guess, open to ideas if, you know, that we can, you know, take this on.
So Mauricio, I know that a while back, the school districts had formed a consortium for the same reason, to do that and to take advantage of the E-rate. And then it was found out that they couldn't take advantage of our E-rate at Nogales Unified School District because it was lower. So I don't know if there is already a study that has been conducted either by the school district separately or through the county superintendents of school's office, that if it's ready and you do want to bring a consultant, maybe it's a good idea to kind of review what's there and see, you know, kind of what the parameters were at the time. Because there are, there are a lot of issues. I mean, there's, our terrain here in our county makes it really impossible. The other thing too is, you know, because of a lot of different laws is you have to go and dig your own trench and put your own pipe, which to me is kind of ludicrous, especially if there's something going on already, where you could partner with a utility company and lay your own conduit pipe in the ground at the same time and have it ready to, to have whatever fiber, whatever can go through there. So, I mean, those are, I mean, you're asking for ideas, that's kind of the way I would, would ask you to pursue it, but maybe there is, maybe there isn't, but if there is, at least it's, it's a good starting point, I think, so. Gentlemen, any comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
I, I agree with you. I think assessing what we currently have and what's out there as far as current information is critical. And looking at the possibility of partnerships. You know, we've already seen and witnessed a great partnership with Mariposa Community Health and I think we should take advantage, whether it be the schools or other organizations. I think a public-private partnership would be ideal. And those are my comments.
Hey, Ted, Bruce?
Yeah, so we, you know, in the end of last year, the county commissioned a study that we voted for to do an assessment of our middle mile network. That's a lot of, and so we're a step ahead. I think we're in a good place. It gave Juan some really good information to base this next decision on and what he needs to, what he's going to recommend to us, how to grow on that study. And so I think, I haven't really had a chance to talk to IT about anything after that study. So maybe Juan, you could talk to us about what you think that this next step is for your, your next assessment.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we, we are building off that assessment. So we have inventoried providers and some of the infrastructure that's in place, whether it's county-owned or privately held. We've also been talking with other stakeholders and other possible partners. So the next step would be more in the engineering phase, right? Like I say, we're not going to be able to, to get fiber, I mean, who knows? Maybe we will, but we got to really take a look and see, you know, do the engineering of getting broadband to everyone. So that's what this study would, would help with and also understand a possible business model because it needs to sustain itself. You know, the grants are great, but they're probably going to be, you know, a one-time thing, so they kind of need to sustain themselves for, for the long term. So we have to also take that into consideration.
Well, but, but so, so maybe here's an opportunity to put some kind of seed money to start a type of company because I think what they're finding in, in, in most places is that there, there are not any private companies out there that can buy any kind of bandwidth from whatever's in the ground and then distribute it out to, to the homes. I think that's what they're finding in, in many places that, because it becomes very expensive for a company to come in and say, well, we'll go ahead and do it, but when they start seeing the price of what it is or what they need to do, many of them back away. I know there was an instance in, I think the president of Boone County or the president of NACO said they signed a mutual agreement with one of their Bells over there to create that type of, of opportunity. So, yeah, I think, so once we identify everything is who do we get as a provider? And I don't think that a county or a city can become a provider to, to be able to, to have those services available. And I think it's, what is, what is it they call it, part of the gig economy? Is that what the broadband is? So, I mean, if you look at what's happening right now with the pandemic, I think some of these, like the Amazons and the Wayfairs and some, some of them have really been being of these, like the Amazons and the Wayfairs and some, some of them have really been getting the biggest cot of the pie because people are afraid to go out and, and shop for themselves. So how do we take advantage, that we both take advantage of it for, for business, for schools, for government, so that those, those, that infrastructure is in place? There's a lot of what ifs, huh?
Absolutely. And, and like I mentioned, we're, we're working with, with other partners tomorrow. I think the Southern Corridor Network will be here, we'll be speaking to them. You know, we're also closely working still with the school superintendent's office and the director, the state director for E-rate. You know, we're, we're looking, they're, most states and, and school districts are pushing to kind of open up the ability to use the, the, the broadband that's being delivered through the E-rate program to push it out to students' homes. So we will also be looking into that. So anything that, that presents itself as an opportunity, we're going to try to, you know, piggyback off of, you know, so we don't have to necessarily build twice in, in certain, in certain areas. So we're, we're looking at anything, you know, that, that, that comes our way.
Any other questions or comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
Juan, is, is the drop to like a home, would it be an aerial drop or would it be a conduit or a combination?
It's going to be a combination of, of...
Can it be co-located with the utilities?
Yeah, yeah, and, and, yeah, we've been talking to, to, to different...
That's what I was just about to comment on. I mean, just yesterday, Juan and I had a discussion with Unisource over that and got some promising news and, and leads of stuff, but yeah, we've been, like Juan said, exploring all sorts of partnerships with anybody that'll talk to us.
So, 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 so if it's fiber, can it be co-located with utility lines or does it have to necessarily be underground through conduit?
Preferably underground, just because it's protected, right? But it, because fiber doesn't emit any kind of signal or, you know, it doesn't interfere with, with anything. It could, you could run it next to power and next to anything, right? And, I mean, yesterday we went with, with Unisource and they actually educated us on which cable is, you know, they, they already have some fibers on there.
Oh, okay.
And educated us on, you know, how they, they run it and...
So an opportunity.
Right, and, and it's early on, you know, they, 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 they kind of stress that, you know, they, they will look into it. They're not in the business of broadband, but it's something that, that, you know, we brought to them and hopefully it, it works out.
Questions, comments? If not, go ahead, Mauricio.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Moving on to the next slide, we, we, finally, we organize. We, we budget accordingly for the next three and a half years of, of the funding and, and just of a recommendation, look at the international border crossing. That's, that's closed. When is that going to reopen for us? We don't know. Prepare for that. Prepare for any state mandated increases that we typically have. Plan for needed building maintenance projects. I met with, with Jesus. There's, there's many projects that are, that are needed that, of course, they're not something that we can fix right away, but we put them on a list, put them on a plan and look forward to that. And then plan for future shortfalls. Again, the, the second wave of, or third wave, however you want to describe it, might, might happen. And, and for fourth, and just prepare for that. You know, coming from the financial perspective, we worry about that and we just want to plan for that, because it, it, it's just something that, that we just are concerned about.
Yeah, and, and I think as, as I look at the news and, and really, I think middle school kids and high school kids are getting affected now and they're, they're, they're more susceptible and it's kind of like when the flu starts in a, in the school and one kid catches it, everybody in the school usually winds up catching it, and that's kind of what they're finding now. So, you know, just, just because everything's reopening doesn't mean we have to let our guard down, as was mentioned during our meeting, so. Go ahead.
All right. The, the last slide that I have is, is the overview of, of all, and it's based on the estimated allocation, which is the first column that you see there. And it provides the recommendation from staff of, of what we're looking at based on all the analysis that was conducted from various assessments and a lot of research that, that we did. And the lost revenues of the general fund, there you can see, it's the one point six million dollars, then the road fund is a two point five million. The broadband project is the million dollars that we set aside. And then for COVID expenses, there, you know, there's half a million dollars there for future expenses that we know are going to materialize once the other funding dries up for us, which is going to be sooner rather than later. And then have a contingency, of course, for, for the future fiscal years that we have of the unknowns. Again, it's very hard to plan for something for this once in a lifetime pandemic, but to have that, that, that type of funding would, would definitely be better. And the available funding would be, in the estimated allocation, would be a million, three hundred and nineteen thousand and that one dollar, of course. The recommendation is the first allocation. That's the one we're going to receive by the 10th of May on or before that. So our recommendation would be to, for the general fund to keep the eight hundred and seventeen thousand, which is half of the allocation that's estimated on, on their lost revenues. The road fund would be the one point two eight two million. And then the broadband, initially, the recommendation was the hundred and twenty thousand for, you know, to have that assessment done. Have the COVID expenditures for the unknowns that are going to happen that year, and then the half of the contingency of a million. So that still would leave seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, five hundred and one for the board to designate and, and provide guidance on that. And then the second allocation, you see there, it would be the same amount, of course, for the four million, five hundred and nine thousand. Again, the second half of the eight hundred and seventeen for the general fund, the second half of the one point two million for the road fund. And then the implementation, I would think that by that time, which would be a year from now, we would have a plan in place for the broadband project and we'd have that funding to implement, enough with stakeholders and partners, of course. And then we would also have the, the contingency part as well there to plan out for the future years, and it would still leave five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred for, for availability funds.
Yeah, and, and that would be funds that we could put out to small business or nonprofits to help. You know, I, I do want to thank you for reaching out to Pima and Mariposa. I think there was a city of Tucson in there that I saw too, of how they're distributing the funds. And I, I think it gives us at least a little bit of opportunity to see what's being done there and, and for us to kind of, you know, borrow or steal some portions there that, that could fit in for that. So, you know, I, here's an opportunity for us to, to, you know, to be able to put out some of these funds. We don't know yet how many people would be, either be reaching out to us or if we've done any type of survey of what the needs in our community are, and I know that they're great. And sometimes a lot of it is just, you know, like a small drop in the bucket, but at least it's something that can help temporarily until things begin to open up. And I think probably one of the most important things is open, opening up that border so that we can allow our good friends from Mexico to come and, and, and spend their, their pesos here in, in, in our community, so. Gentlemen? Bruce, Rudy?
Go ahead.
I know that you reached out to the city of Tucson and as supervisor, as Chairman Reese mentioned, part of what they did for the, for the nonprofits is they used the Southern Arizona Community Foundation as a resource to analyze the grants, put together a grant committee for local residents for Tucson. They use Tucson. I know that they've done this a couple times in Santa Cruz County with other private funding. So I would, you know, I think I would recommend that whatever amount that we give you that, or even before we do that, that you start having a conversation with them about what they can do, what are the guidelines they would recommend. And to come back to us with a recommendation on, on how, how to deal with that. And then we're going to need to figure out how to deal with the small businesses in our community. I think a lot of the medium-sized businesses are the types of businesses that have their financials in order so that they can get PPP loans and EDIL loans and, but it's the really small businesses that don't have that capacity, that are just doing their, you know, they're running their businesses as, through their personal finances. Those are the people that are going to, that need a shot in the arm. And so I know that there's, you know, we need to find an organization that can deal with that because we don't have the capacity. And also ask that organization what guidelines they would recommend. You know, they've done that, they've done it once or twice in this community. It was Local First Arizona did that. That's just a suggestion, there might be another organization.
But one thing though, that, that I would look at is, is an administrative fee, because we can reach out to them and if, if, what we want is we want to get the biggest bang for the buck that, that we can. I don't know what their administrative structure is, and I guess as you suggested, it's, okay, if we do this with you, what, what it costs for you to administer the program? Because I, I want to make sure that at the end of the day, that we can put out, if I had my choice, at least ninety-nine percent of the money back into the community and not having to pay a tremendous administrative fee, because, well, we're doing this, we're doing that, we're doing that. So if at, at the end of the day, we have a hundred dollars and it costs us forty dollars to deliver sixty dollars, I mean, I, I want to make sure that, you know, whoever it is that, that we do is that the vast majority of, of those federal dollars go out to the people that really need them, so. That's my comment.
I think you'll probably see in, in, when the federal feds come out with their guidelines, they'll probably have something in there that's allowable expenses for administration.
Yeah, Treasury hasn't come out. Supervisor Maleta.
Mr. Chair, thank you. I, I agree with everything my two colleagues have said. One, one thing I'd like to add on there is that we did have Angie do an, an assessment, didn't we? So we, we may have an idea of some, some people that, you know, just like some people did great during the whole pandemic, there's some that obviously didn't do very well. And those are the people that we need to look at trying to help, like Vice Chairman Bracker mentioned, the, the small businesses that, that don't have the capacity or haven't had any help. I, I fully agree and I, I, I also mentioned to Jennifer that I don't want to be paying administrative costs as well. I want it to go into people's hands where it can be used and be useful as well, and I think we all agree on that. And I, I think it's a great opportunity to put our community back on its feet and hopefully have some new development, you know, which I, I know Frank has a lot of great ideas in Jesus and use it as a catapult to push forward, hopefully. And those are my thoughts, Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Jennifer.
If I could, and just to reiterate, you know, the Treasury guidelines for this money has not come out, and so we can't do much more than what we're doing today because we don't know how it can be used. Supervisor Bracker, you mentioned, city of Tucson, Pima County, we did give you those examples. Those were monies that was, were distributed as a result of the CARES Act. So we do expect those requirements to be slightly different. They should follow along the same lines. We don't want to reinvent the wheel, that's why we got them, but we will be waiting for that Treasury guideline, and that's when we'll really move into action, meet with you individually to talk about how it can be spent. We'll work with KEM to start developing those MOUs and things with our pass-through agencies. So we've got a lot of work ahead of you, us, but we did want to give you, you know, an overview of what this might look like and the, and the money that could be given back to the community to, to spur the community on.
Yeah, and, and, you know, in a way, we're fortunate that we're getting a direct allotment of funds and it's not going through the state. I think there are small cities that have to depend on, on the governor. We saw how that, that went and, and while I thank the governor for the allocation we got when we were doing our, our budget last year that really, you know, brought us from underwater, brought us back, so we were able to, to at least breathe a small sigh of relief and not have to, you know, do drastic things. I, I think for us, it's, it's, it's a benefit and, I, I mean, at the end of the day, it gives us an idea of what would, will be available. So as, as Jennifer suggests, until Treasury really develops what the rules are, and I know NACO has been working with them. I know there was a, one of our meetings and so, you know, they were asking people to, to submit, you know, some ideas because it, it's, I guess it's not one size fits all because every community is so different and the needs are, are so different than, it's not like a cookie cutter approach where one size fits all and we move forward. But, you know, I, this gives us a good idea and, you know, if things get a little bit better and we have a little extra cash, we can always put a little more into going out to the community, depending on, on how things continue to go here. You know, as our, as our big road project winds, winds down, that impact, and when that goes away, it's going to have something. And I, and I know you're being really very cautious with the five percent mostly that you're figuring out, but I know we've been very conservative as a board. Even when we would figure our budgets, we would never look at pie in the sky things, but you know, we would try to, to present a budget that at the end, you know, we're a little low sometimes in some of the estimate revenues, but at the end, we would come in a little bit, we're much better than we had anticipated. So I, I think it's a good approach and, you know, you get that big influx, then good for us, but if we don't, at least, you know, we're, we're living within, within our means, so. Vice Chairman Bracker, anything else to add?
No, I'd like to thank staff for putting this together. It really brings to our attention what's happening, but also lets the public know what's coming, what we're, kind of what we're thinking generally. Obviously, you know, we, the best estimates we have right now are based on our conversations with, you know, with our organizations, County Supervisor Association, National Association of County Officers, NACO that Manny is, participates in. Those are, that's how we get our best guidance, so until those come out, you know, we're just in a holding pattern, just trying to figure out what to do with this, but I appreciate this first, this first effort.
Supervisor Maleta?
I too just want to thank staff for putting this together and it's a great opportunity to give people sorely needed help.
Yeah, and, and, yeah, I mean, Jennifer, Mauricio, I know we met, we tweaked, tweaked the numbers again and, but, you know, it's, it's, I know we're going to be getting somewhere around nine million dollars, more or less, and I mean, it's kind of what it looks down, so at, at least we're, we're, we're looking ahead and we're trying to see how, how we can make this work for, for everyone, so. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jesus, Jennifer, Mauricio, KEM.
Mr. Chairman, I think also thank our senators. Kirsten Sinema, Mark Kelly, our delegation that, you know, the Southern Arizona delegation, Anker Patrick Gruhava, who really fought hard to make sure that this money was, came directly to us. I mean, there are some states that have hundreds of counties, it was very difficult, but for us, it was, you know, with... us, it was, you know, with 15 counties in the state of Arizona, it was critical that this money came directly to, to us, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, so. Great, well, me no more comments. At this time, we'll go back to our regular session and...
Motion adjourned.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. I'll favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Meeting stands adjourned.